Yeah, so Eddie, did you have a main brand in one of these?
Hmm.
You're gonna, you're gonna send me the names.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it. We're gonna get it done during holidays.
Good.
We have, we have all this good stuff. We're ready.
And you can buy the same premium for sitting on that chair.
I love it. That's right now, my ass, boy.
You might get blamed for it. Okay.
Are we ready? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. My name is Sina Najad, the Chair of the Committee, and along with my colleagues, the Commissioners, I welcome you. Please make sure you've silenced your cell phone, and we get started with the roll call, please.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Mishner Beatty.
Present.
Mishner Javi.
Here.
Mishner Little's absent. Mishner Maiken.
Here.
Mishner Noyola.
Here.
Mishner Karishi.
Here.
Mishner Senegar.
Here.
Mishner Steinhegen is absent, and alternate Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Good afternoon to all of you. We do have the minutes of the last meeting, I believe distributed, and I would entertain a motion to approve and/or hear your comments.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Boone, good afternoon to you. It's so nice to see you smiling.
Smiling widely, widely. Good afternoon. All right. The first item on the regular meeting is File PZ twenty twenty-one sixteen, and is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of High Point subdivision Phase Two, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Daniel Dotson, PEA Fitz and Shipman Incorporated, has requested this preliminary plat approval of Highland subdivision Phase Two. This is a six-point-eight-six-nine acre development that was first approved back in December of two thousand four. Phase One was filed for record in March of two thousand six. However, since it has been more than two years since the preliminary plat was approved, it is required to seek approval again. Phase Two will extend High Point Avenue to the north and consists of thirty residential lots. Water and sewer will be provided by an extension of the city's facilities. Let me go ahead and show you, before you can see the layout of Phase Two there, extending High Point, as well as the proposed lots. I should point out that waivers for the number of lots on a single access for the length of cul-de-sac were not discussed back when the preliminary plat was first approved. However, the subdivision ordinance does state that a single outlet residential street shall serve no more than thirty-two dwelling units. Mr. Dotson would like to request a waiver to allow sixty-five lots on a single outlet residential street. So combining Phase One existing as, in addition to this phase, would be more than the thirty-two maximum. So they are requesting a waiver of that provision. And in addition, a waiver is also being requested for the length of the cul-de-sac. The ordinance states that a cul-de-sac shall not be greater than eight hundred feet long, and this proposed extension of the street would result in a nineteen-hundred-foot-long cul-de-sac. And also, in review of the plat, we are requesting that one of the lots, Lot Thirty-Six of Block One, should be changed to sixty-six ninety-eight High Point Avenue. But with that, staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat with the waivers, with the one condition of changing of the address of Lot Thirty-Six, Block One to sixty-six ninety-eight High Point Avenue. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Yes.
Yes.
What is your logic of allowing the waivers if the ordinance clearly states what it says?
Right, so, the, the way the subdivision regulations spell, essentially the text of the subdivision regulations intend for a more regular block pattern. So, the idea is to have a block run, a street that is not too long. You don't want to have a cul-de-sac that's too long. Having said that, it's not uncommon for us to grant waivers, recommend waivers, because at the end of the day, the regulations, the regulations tend to be, I don't want to say dated, but they tend to not reflect a more typical, modern subdivision with curved, line streets, as opposed to, say, a grid pattern. So, again, it's not, it's not uncommon for us to recommend the waiver, and the waiver to be granted.
I'm having a hard time with that, because if, if the regulations outdated, we need to go ahead and fix it. There's no reason for us to sit around and keep giving people waivers if we think the regulation's outdated. So, the, the length of the cul-de-sac from eight hundred to nineteen hundred, that's quite a bit of difference. It's not fifty feet, forty feet, twenty feet, and the number of lots is quite a bit different. So, I just don't understand why we should give waivers of such if, if we feel like that the, the ordinance is not up-to-date and appropriate. So that's just my, my two-bit for it.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair, fair statement. I will say that, again, the text of the regulations is to have a regular pattern of blocks, and that whereas the blocks are not too long. But the regulations really are laid out, if you had no restrictions, such as drainage canals, which I think we may have here, or other existing subdivisions where, again, I think the regulations are spelled out where you had a clean slate and you could just draw lines on, on the paper. It, to your point, I think it probably would be good for us to look at some language to that effect, where if there were some constraints geographically, or again, if there's an existing development pattern where trying to lay out a gridded layout, you know, just doesn't make sense, I think it'd be a good idea maybe to have some language in there to still encourage that pattern, but allow, you know, allow for the waiver under maybe certain criteria.
Yeah, it's just, what, what I'm, what I'm troubled with is if, if the next guy comes back and one of us is not in a good mood and don't want to give him a waiver, then it's just not fair.
Yeah.
That's not how you do business with people.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
So, that is just my opinion. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the gentleman?
How many times have you all used the waiver?
I would say we grant two or three waivers a year, on average.
On this particular item?
On this one, again, this one, when it came back in two thousand six, I think they just didn't pick up on the fact that a waiver would be required, and so the waiver was not asked for and it was not granted. The, the plat was simply approved without the waiver. So now that we've recognized the fact that, you know, there really should have been, either it should have been drawn differently, or there should have been a waiver granted, since we picked up on that, we're now asking to, or encouraging the waiver.
Well, you shouldn't be the one picking up on that. Whoever drew this should have known the ordinance.
Yeah.
So is there consideration to change, make a change?
Well...
In the regulation?
Yeah, again, we're recommending the waiver be approved. You know, I will just say that, you know, for them to get around the waiver, or not have to even ask for the waiver, again, they would, they would have to, you know, just looking at what they've got proposed, you know, stub out towards the, I guess it would be towards the east, but that's property that they don't own. But that is something that we could require.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I trust that Mr. Dotson's here?
Yes.
I saw him here, yeah, good afternoon. How are you today?
Good.
Would you state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Daniel Dotson, Fitz and Shipman, fourteen zero five Cornerstone Court, Beaumont, Texas, and I think it was explained very good. Any other additional questions, be more than happy to answer. We're basically just moving forward, the same plat that was approved in two thousand four, just updated it and sent it back in for approval.
All right. Let's see, and you are aware of the, the ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Dotson?
Is it just one way in and one way out?
Yes, sir, yeah, the, the, it's a long, slender piece of property, and it's surrounded by D D six ditch, so there is no access point there around the side. The property adjacent to the east is not the property owner's, different property owner. And the, the street is a private subdivision as well, it's a gated community, so it's a private street for the development.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
Sir, thank you.
Okay, we've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved to approve with the requested waiver and the one condition of the change of address.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand with aye. And now what against it, thank you, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next one. And Mr. Boone, I'd like for you to maybe have a workshop of some sort, let's go ahead and review this. If, if these ordinances are not updated, we need to go ahead and take care of those.
Sure, yes, sir. Okay. The next item on the regular agenda is PZ twenty twenty-one forty-six, and this is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of Doge's Diamond D Ranch, Phase Seven, Jefferson County, Texas. Don King of Fitz and Shipman has requested the preliminary approval of Doge's Diamond D Ranch, Phase Seven. The project is located south of U.S. Highway Ninety, on the west side of Diamond D Drive, in the planning area of the city of Beaumont's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Thirty-one-point-two-four acre development is a thirty-six lot, single-family residential subdivision. All lots will have frontage on the proposed Hercules Drive, which has a sixty-foot rightaway and a twenty-eight-foot wide paved curb and gutter street. Water will be provided by Meeker Water Supply Corporation, and sewer will be individual septic systems. Let me show you the, in front of you is the plat showing the proposed subdivision. We have circulated to all interested parties, and staff is recommending approval of this request with no conditions. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. King. Good afternoon. You're looking nice today, how have you been?
Oh, pretty good. I had COVID back in November, but I'm glad to.
But you've got your A and M tie on, so that ought to be a good day.
I do, I got an advertiser once. My name is Don King with Fitz and Shipman Engineers out of fourteen five, fourteen oh five Cornerstone Court in Beaumont. And basically, yes, this is another development from Doge's Diamond D Ranch. It's a continuation sort of of the pattern that we've been doing out there with some cul-de-sac streets and curb and gutter, and so this is, this is, like I say, just a next phase progressing down the roadway. So with that, I guess I'll just open up if there's any questions or comments.
This has been pretty successful, hasn't it?
Uh, it has got some momentum going out there.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. Any, any questions for Mr. King?
All, all your lots the same size?
Uh, the, the cul-de-sac lots are a little bit larger, but they're all, I believe, I can't read how big they are, but...
They look like they're very close.
I'm thinking they're, they're at least half an acre, or probably closer to three-quarters of an acre lot. Pretty, pretty size, we, we consider it kind of a rural ranch-type subdivision, something like that.
What does it do?
Uh, they're about two-hundred-and-twenty or something like that. Again, my eyes aren't good enough to read my maps anymore. But it's, I believe it's over two-hundred feet. Yeah, they're... They're about a hundred-and-twenty foot across the front and about two-twenty.
Half an acre.
Yeah, at least, at least half an acre. It's a private, or I shouldn't say private. The water's provided by Meeker, but each person has to do their own individual wastewater treatment system, aerobic system, and that sort of thing.
Do you sprinkle wastewater? Have you spread your system on your wastewater?
I, I'm not understanding you.
You have a sprinkled system with your, with your wastewater?
Right, yes, the aerobic systems, some of them use spray, and then some of them do drip irrigation. It's kind of up to the homeowners, and those all have to be approved by the Jefferson County Environmental Department, because this is out in the county. Technically, it's in the county, even though it's in the city's ETJ, your jurisdiction.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
What is Lot Nine and Ten? Yeah, so this is... Lot Nine and Ten.
Okay, again, my eyes aren't good enough to read, is that in the...
I think it's a prior phase.
Seven and Six.
It's a prior phase, I think prior block.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, over there, yes, those are prior phases. That was Diamond D Phase Three B, and those are already plotted, or platted. When we did those, we had numbers going, the lot numbers were going down Diamond D Drive, so those were already pre-assigned. That was platted maybe two years ago.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Have a great afternoon. Okay, this one doesn't require a public hearing, so we've heard from the applicant and also the staff, there are no objections to any of the documents, so I entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve, File PZ twenty twenty-one dash forty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Okay. Mr. Boone? I guess now we go to, this is the first combined meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, that concludes the items for the regular meeting, so we would move into the joint meeting, assuming we have a quorum. Don't have a quorum.
Yeah, you, you don't get up, last time you got me in a lot of trouble. Good afternoon. Please.
Welcome to the joint session of the Beaumont Commission, Planning Commission and the Beaumont City Council. Mayor Ames is not even present today, she's addressing some water damage issues in her home, caused by the last winter storm that we experienced. Please know that today's meeting is the only opportunity to have a public hearing to address these items. It'll come before the council in two weeks for the final decision. There will not be a public hearing, so this is your only opportunity to speak to these items in the general. Again, thank you for being here today, and can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ames is absent, Mayor Pro Tim Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Pete absent, Councilmember Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Felshaw. Mr. Boone?
Good afternoon, again. The first item on the joint meeting is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a tool rental and equipment rental store in G C General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District. Janay Mommer of Lars Anderson and Associates is requesting permission to allow a tool rental and equipment rental store at thirty-nine-ten East Tex Freeway, also known as the Home Depot. Some of the equipment being offered is not currently available at the store, and items such as backhoes are more commonly used by contractors, therefore the specific use permit is required. Ten parking spaces will be utilized for the equipment storage and display, leaving more than adequate parking for the existing business. We'll go ahead and show you, this is the, outlined in red is the existing location. Many of us are familiar with the Home Depot there on East Tex. This is an aerial view, and if you see outlined here in red is where the proposed tool rental area will be. This is the proposed site plan, again, you can see more than adequate parking in the front, and this is where the rental will be. This is a view of the subject property. Also the subject property, and again, this is the side where the rental area will be. View to the east, a view to the southeast, the south, this is the Accura dealership going in, also to the south. And we sent out nine notices to adjacent property owners. We've received zero responses in favor and zero responses in opposition. But based on this application, staff is recommending approval of this application. With that, are there any questions of staff? Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience?
I do not believe so.
Okay. This is Home Depot's venture, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're, they're the ones who are gonna just basically add to their store?
Correct.
Okay. But the business would be the same business?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not another entity, that's what I'm asking.
It may be a subsidiary, but it's in partnership with Home Depot.
Yeah, okay.
Is this a construction rental?
Yes, sir, but it's, it tends to be heavier equipment, so, you know, rental asaws and tools and stuff like that wouldn't have been an issue, but with it being backhoes and things more larger that we, if we saw these in G C M D, we would require the S U P, so that's, that's why it's required.
Okay. The fence is currently there, next, to the next property?
Um, I don't believe there is a fence.
Would, would, would there one be required?
No, sir, it's commercial against a commercial abutting, so there's not, there's, the buffer is not required.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the gentleman? Yes, so go ahead.
Are they going to have separate entrance and exit for heavy equipment because it's going to be causing problems for general public?
Right, so, I don't know if we can get the, let me pull the site plan back up. I think I can get it. So this is the existing access to the side street, and this is the area where the tool rental would be. We don't, it's been looked at by our traffic engineer, we don't feel like there's a, there's gonna be a serious conflict. You know, most folks come in, come in and go kind of the front off of East Tex, and this would still be open, but we feel like, other than deliveries, you know, most, most folks are not, not using this entrance. There shouldn't, shouldn't be a significant impact.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Where is this equipment gonna be cleaned and how is it gonna be cleaned? Let me rephrase that, I want to make sure that we're not getting pushed all this blood down our drainage.
Okay, and I don't believe the applicant's in the audience.
They were unable to attend, but they said that we'll be watching and learning to channel.
Okay. But in their application, they don't address cleaning of the equipment.
That is a good concern, maybe we ought to have that as one of the conditions. For the cleaning of equipment not to, not to adversely affect the sewer system.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Great, we've heard the comments and also the report from the staff, so I entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve, PZ twenty twenty dash four.
Did you have a concern about the cleaning or not?
With, with one condition, with the cleaning of the equipment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might make a suggestion, perhaps the condition could be that the cleaning and the filtering of the cleaning be subject to the approval of the Water Quality Division of the city?
I think that's a perfect way of putting it, thank you. Mr. Senegal, you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Amendment to your motion?
Second.
We have a motion with an amendment, and we have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you very much. Okay. So far, you're doing good.
Okay. The next item on the joint agenda is request for amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning signage, specifically Sections twenty-eight-point-oh-one-point-oh-oh-four, twenty-eight-point-oh-three-point-oh-one-eight, twenty-eight-point-oh-three-point-oh-two-oh, twenty-eight-point-oh-three-point-oh-two-one, twenty-eight-point-oh-four-point-oh-oh-three, twenty-eight-point-oh-four-point-oh-oh-five, twenty-eight-point-oh-four-point-oh-oh-six, and twenty-eight-point-oh-four-point-oh-oh-eight, Section twenty-two. As a result of the court cases, such as Reed versus Town and Gilbert, as well as Arizona and Reagan National Advertising versus the City of Austin, which was resolved, I believe, last fall, most city sign ordinances throughout the country, as well as many state statutes regulating signs, are now subject to challenges of being unconstitutional. Now, I should point out that, as of yet, our ordinance has not been determined to be unconstitutional, but City of Beaumont, like other cities, are now in the process of amending their sign ordinances to comply such that we're not subject to challenge. So again, that's why this is before us. The decisions coming out of the Supreme Court relate to the heavy burden that cities have to justify the regulation of speech. The courts have essentially said that if a city or state has to read a sign to enforce their ordinance, it may be unconstitutional. The issue for Beaumont and most city sign ordinances is that being able to read a sign is critical to the enforcement. In an attempt to comply with these decisions, we are making recommendations to the following sections that have been listed. The proposed amendments offer new language that will allow a reasonable number, size, and design of signs for differing uses in differing zoning districts, while substantially retaining the established regulatory schemes of citywide sign rules, as well as special sign rules for, for the specific areas of the historic district, as well as overlay districts, such as Long Dallin Road and M L K. In addition, new definitions of advertising signs and on-premise signs will allow for the ongoing enforcement scheme of billboards without the, without, again, the need to rely on the content of the sign to do so. So in essence, what we've done is we've gone through our sign regulation and removed any reference to content. So if you, if you've ever looked at the sign regulations, it often refers to content. So there may be exemptions for, for sale signs, there may be exemptions for campaign signs, there may be exemptions for real estate signs, and that's typical of most cities. The problem is with these court cases now, you've got to read it to enforce it. So again, the scheme we've come up with, our intent is to try and retain as much as possible all of the regulations and schemes that we have on, on the books. You know, we have, you'll see in the sections, we have our basic sign ordinance, which is citywide, and then we have, we have a section for the historic district, which has special conditions. and then we have, we have a section for the historic district, which has special conditions. Then there's a special overlay for the major Dallin sign overlay district, there's one for MLK area. So there's special rules in special areas. And then, of course, we have regulations for our billboards. And so I think we've done our best to try and maintain those schemes in a way that doesn't require us to read the signs in order to enforce these new ordinances. And so if you look through what we've proposed, you'll see references to what signs say, those have been stricken with a strike through. You'll notice in the first couple pages, we've amended definition to an advertising sign versus an owner identification sign. Again, an advertising sign traditionally is a billboard. Problem typically is you've gotta read it to know it's a billboard. So what we've done here is we've copied the exact definition that the state uses in their scheme for advertising signs and billboards. And then as you look through, most of the other amendments are again related to content, so we have struck those. Probably the biggest change you'll see is if you, if you go back to, in your packet, if you go back to page one thirty-seven, which is about the fifth page from the back, and if you look at the bottom right, you'll see page one thirty-seven. Give everybody a second to get there. And what this section is, 'cause I know y'all don't have the full zoning ordinance in front of you, which contains the sign ordinance, what this section is, this is the listing of exemptions in the basic underlying sign ordinance. And so you'll see there, under, on, under the exemptions subsection E, you'll see one, changing of permitted sign face copy. Again, we're taking copy out and replacing that with sign face, so again, the idea is we don't actually have to read it. But as you get to the bottom, you'll see like number three, name plate and street address signs less than three square feet in size. And under the prior ordinance, you know, your house number or your building number, which of course is necessary for public safety, how does the fire department, police department, ambulance find your building? You wanna have obviously a house number, a building number, right? Under the prior ordinance, it says house number. The problem with the Supreme Court decision is I can't distinguish between a house number or anything else. And so we've struck that, so if you go down the list, we've also struck real estate signs. Because how do we distinguish between a real estate sign and any other kind of sign without being able to read it? Okay, you'll see we've struck construction sign. You see we've struck temporary decorative flags. Election signs, we've struck that. And so these are the old sections that refer to a content-controlled sign that we would allow. And so in lieu of that, because you have to read that to enforce it, we've added language. So you'll start to see under section six, what is allowed and is exempt under all sign ordinance sections would be one sign affixed to a structure less than four square feet in area. So that would be, essentially that's for a house number, okay? In other parts of the city ordinance, it, it talks about you need to have a house number, like the fire code says you need to have a house number. So that's a prescriptive requirement in another, another ordinance. But this, under the sign ordinance, now allows for a house number up to four square feet in area. So if you see the little diagram in front of you, next to the front door of the house, there's a little, there's a little sign which would indicate the four square feet in area. Now, I should point out that under this ordinance, I can't insist that it's a house number. Under another ordinance, like we can insist that you have a house number, but under the sign ordinance, I can't insist that that's a house number. So it could say anything you want it to say. It could say save the whales, for example. It could be an American flag, it could be a number, okay? Because I cannot read it to enforce it, okay? Going down to the next section, you'll see flags. And you'll see in the little diagram, there are two flags. And you'll see under the subsection Flags in Residential District, this would be allowed, two fabric or cloth flags not being more than twenty-four square feet in area, affixed to not more than one side of the cloth or fabric shape by a pole or post not higher than twenty-five feet in height. So under this scheme, in a residential district, you're allowed two flags. Now again, I cannot in this ordinance say we're gonna exempt all American flags. Because I would have to read it, see it, look at it, to determine that it's an American flag in order to exempt it, okay? So what I'm doing is, what we're doing or proposing to do is allow two flags. Now, anything we discuss in here, council, commission can recommend and enact three flags, four flags, one flag, no flags. But what, the scheme we came up with was to attempt to look at a typical house or a typical business and decide, you know, what's a reasonable number, size, location of signs, flags, et cetera, that makes sense for a house. So again, going down the list, we have a provision for a house number, which I cannot require that it's a house number. We've got a provision for two flags. Now, it could be an American flag and a Texas flag, or it could be two signs that say save the whales. But that's up to the homeowner or the property owner, okay? Because I cannot have an exemption in here that says we're not gonna regulate American flags. Because for me to do that, I'd have to read it, look at it, to interpret that. Moving on to flags in commercial areas, also allowed there, if you look at the next section, eight, on the following page, one thirty-nine, election season supplementary signs. So in this section, again, whereas under the prior ordinance, we were exempting signs that were political in nature, we can no longer do that, because we would have to read them in order to determine that they were political, okay? So under this scheme, we would allow an additional freestanding temporary sign. So if you see the little example here, you're allowed one freestanding sign. So if you wanna, and the example is, we call them bandit signs, but you know the typical real estate signs or campaign signs, those signs. We would allow homes and residential to have one temporary sign not greater than eight square feet in area and not more than six feet in height, okay? So if you want a sign in your front yard that says save the whales, or if it's an American flag, or whatever you want it to say, your freedom of speech, you get one in a, in a typical, single-family zone. And actually, any zone. And again, these numbers are subject to change, recommended by the planning commission, ultimate decision in the city council. So you're allowed one, which is up next to the house. Now, we get back to campaign season. If you look here, that the language we have is during campaign season, okay, you're allowed an additional sign. Again, we cannot look at it and determine whether or not it's a campaign sign. All we can do is say you can have an additional sign during campaign season, okay? Now, we can restrict the size and the height, and we can say for a period of not more than sixty days prior and ten days after an election involving candidates or measure for a federal, state, or local election that involves a measure on the ballot of an election within the area, the content of the sign shall not be regulated. So again, everybody's entitled to one freestanding sign. During election season, you're entitled to another sign. Again, we, it can say whatever you want, you want it to say, but you're allowed an additional sign. The idea is to be able to allow additional signs for a campaign, but not have to regulate it in terms of content. Now, if you look at the next paragraph B, let's see. So this is in commercial district. Here's the commercial district, same thing, but you're allowed one temporary sign per street frontage that abuts the property, there's not more than eight square feet in height and six feet, or excuse me, eight square feet in area and six feet in height. Lots with street frontage in excess of three hundred feet shall be permitted an additional sign for each additional three hundred feet frontage for a period of sixty days prior and ten days after an election involving candidates or measure for a federal, state, local election that involves a measure on the ballot of an election within the area. Again, the content of the sign shall not be regulated. So the idea is, commercial properties with more area, more street frontage would be allowed an additional sign. And then the section C is additional signs, election signs for polling places. So again, we have polling places that, as you know, as you get close to campaign sign, to campaign season, there are kind of signs all over the place. So there's multiple, multiple signs. So instead of us going out there and eliminating that, we have a section in there which basically says there shall be no limit. If you go down to section nine, properties for sale or lease. Again, if your property is being for sale, marketed for sale or lease, you're allowed to have an additional sign, not more than eight square feet in area and six feet in height, provided that the additional temporary sign is removed within seven days following the sale or lease of the property. So again, can't control the content, but if your house or your building is, or your property is for sale or for lease, you get additional sign, can't control the content. Under, properties under construction, section ten, properties that are actively under construction and for thirty days after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy are permitted, one additional temporary sign not more than forty square feet in area. So again, a building's built that says this was constructed by so-and-so company, you get an additional sign. Again, can't control the content, but you get an additional sign. And then last, number eleven, garage sales. If you're having a garage sale, you're allowed a garage sale sign, six square feet in area, not located within the right-of-way, permissible for ten consecutive days in a calendar year, calendar year prior to the garage sale. And again, that language was taken from the prior ordinance, but again, it doesn't rely, it doesn't rely on the content to enforce. And then number twelve is just your basic single sign that you're allowed to have year-round, not greater than eight square feet or higher than six feet in area. So that is what is proposed. It is significantly different than what we have had in the past in terms of, you know, what's allowed in a single-family home. But with that, are there any questions? So again, while we can't regulate content, we can regulate location, number, size, height. So yes, if, if, if a, if a sign is put out that's too big, then you could be subject to penalty. Now, of course, usually what we do is we send a, well, we send a warning letter, and usually it gets, it gets moved. But yeah, technically, if, if it doesn't get moved, you could file, you could, we could file a municipal court to make them move it.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
I've known you for a long time, and you've always done a great job. And this is the craziest thing you came up with, come up with. Seriously, it just doesn't make sense to me. I have three kids in three different schools. I wouldn't have their flags up in, in my yard, and I can't do it.
You could have two of their flags up, you could have three of their flags up.
So what are you gonna tell the third one?
That's up to you.
No, it's up to you that's preventing me from doing it.
You can increase the number of flags as a recommendation to the council.
Yeah, as I stated at the beginning, the council can change all these numbers. If you say, you know, two, two flags is not enough, you want four, or five, or six, the council can do that. This is just, what this scheme is about is looking around different neighborhoods in the city as to what's out there in a typical house. I mean, yes, we've all seen houses out there with twenty flags. There's one right, I saw it yesterday on Eleventh Street by the Duck Pond. There's a guy, he's got twenty flags out there. And if that's what y'all wanna allow, the city wants to allow, that's fine. But what this scheme is based on is what is a typical house, single-family house, what do they have? They have an American flag, they might have a Texas flag, they have a house number, and on occasion, they might have a garage sale, they might have a campaign sign, they might have a construction sign, garage sale. But with us, the city not being able to regulate what they say or what they look like, our hands are tied.
Yeah, but, but you're also saying a house number affixed to the structure. My house is, is three hundred feet from the street. How is anybody gonna read the number?
Well, you get a free, you get a freestanding sign.
Ooh, and I don't get any flags?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that eliminated one flag.
Yeah. Okay, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just don't see why I'm getting into the business of telling people what to put in their yard or not, but, but again, that's, that's just me. And if you have a property for sale that's eight hundred feet long, I put one at one corner of it and one sign on the other corner, and six hundred feet of it's gonna go unnoticed.
Yeah, this, this ordinance is full of telling people what to do with signs on the property. This is an effort to maintain as much of that, 'cause again, there's been a lot of work over the decades of what's in this ordinance. So this is an attempt to maintain the schemes that the city's enacted over decades,
Yeah.
while having to adhere to admittedly a very odd scheme. And in fact, our city attorney can tell you, even the Supreme Court themselves struggled with the decision. I mean, they came out with dissenting opinions, and...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. Mr. Neal, you, you raise your hand first.
I have a couple of questions, under number ten, properties under construction. You know, being in the construction business, it's not uncommon for us to have ten, fifteen signs on a job site. A lot of them are life safety issues, so I don't see how that's enforceable. Under number eight, A and B, does the city have the authority to enforce? There's nineteen people running for city council right now. If I want to put all nineteen people's sign on my yard, I don't think the city has the authority to tell me I can't.
And again, that's up to the council.
No, I'm asking from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, legally, the, the council and the city can limit the number, size, number, location, height. And it's up to you as to how many you deal with.
Ms. Mouton, you raise your hand next.
Yes, just wondering, how many complaints do we get from this type of from citizens complaining about flags? I mean, I got a whole list of stuff that I get complaints about because I have to fix besides the flag.
Yeah, the short answer is not very often. We get, we'll get a call when somebody puts in, they're typically political, but they'll put in big, big signs in their front yard. I know there's, there's been on one on Folsom, as you get close to Dallin, right there at the curve. And from time to time, not very often, to answer your question, not very often, but from time to time, we get an inquiry about, you know, hey, this single-family house has put out this big sign that says A, B, or C, can they do that? And if you go to the ordinance, you, no, and so we'll reach out to them and say, look, that sign is too big.
So can we deal with, with it on an individual basis or on a need-to-be basis?
Again, you could, if, if you say, if you wanna exempt all flags, we can do that. In other words, if you want four flags or five flags, whatever, the, the council can do that. And the council can, you know, eliminate all these requirements. The purpose from this is is preserving as much as, as possible what has been adopted over the years, so...
Chris?
Yes.
Thank you for your work. I see it as a, a template or a model, or a reg, a standard that needs to be set by the city. Anything outside the boundaries of that is negotiable, and the city has the last say-so about it. But I, I agree with anyone that's in agreement with the fact that we as a city need to have a template, a standard, or model... We as a city need to have a template, a standard, or model to follow. And anything outside of those boundaries is negotiable and the final say should be the, the city council. Am I, am I not hearing you say that?
That's correct.
We, we do have a robust sign regulation. That's already in effect. And I'm not sure what, what this is doing to the existing sign. I mean, it obviously changes quite a bit.
Yeah, that's what I see.
But we have, we have a sign ordinance that's been in very well, uh, enforced.
And, and what I'm seeing here this afternoon is the fact that. You're asking to change some of the language as well, make some amendments to, uh.
And personally, this is a huge amount of information for us to make a decision, a recommendation now.
Yeah, and again.
I think there's other people's in- input. We need to take a little more time.
Yeah, there's.
Before we make any kind of recommendation to the city council. There's a lot of aspects out there that need to be looked at.
Well, the good, the good thing about this forum is regardless of how we vote, the city council has the last vote.
Correct.
So. We can, we can discuss it and vote on it now, but.
Table.
The last vote on it will go before the city council in two weeks. Is that correct?
So it is a lot. I- if you look at this ordinance, there's a large portion of this ordinance that is sign, sign-related. And so it is a lot and we are presenting it out there because, you know, the, the ordinance. Is subject to challenge. We're not looking at any challenges right now, but it is subject to challenge. And so it doesn't have to be done, you know, immediately. Um, you know, it could even be if, if the commission wants to appoint a subcommittee, if it's, if it's that detailed, you know, the commission has the ability to do that. But at a minimum.
What about a workshop on this? Can we do something like that where we've got more input, other ideas? And you can interpret this a little bit more clearly?
Well, that's what I'm saying is we could have a subcommittee to look at it. Because it is, it's pretty involved.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, at a minimum, you don't, you, we, you don't have to vote on today.
Has the city attorney looked at this and been part of the network and the, uh, the work?
Yes.
The way I look at it, if it ain't broke, don't break it.
It's broke. Short answer, it's broken.
It's cracked.
It is? Okay. Uh, Mr. Getz, you raised your hand, uh, and then you.
Well, I, I have a concern about trying to regulate political speech as applied under the First Amendment. You know, political speech in the form of a campaign sign is, uh, part of the bedrock of the First Amendment. And any attempt to regulate that is going to be subject to strict scrutiny, uh, in a constitutional analysis. And I understand the decision in Reed versus C. Gilbert where it's content-based. And that may conflict, probably does conflict with a provision of the Texas Election Code. And that, and I'm talking specifically about election code, section two, five, nine, point zero, zero, three. But that is still state law. That hasn't been challenged. So that has not been ruled unconstitutional. And why do I say that? I say that to say this. Under section two, five, nine, point zero, zero, three, it says a municipality may not. Regulate, uh, a sign that contains primarily a political message. That is located on private real property with the consent of the property owner. Now, that's the current state of the law in Texas. We all took a note to uphold laws in the constitution of the state of Texas. And until that was overturned by challenge, you know, that is the law. And that was enacted, uh, I believe in twenty nineteen, September the first, twenty nineteen. So with that being the law in the state of Texas saying that a municipality cannot. Regulate a political sign by putting, you know, time periods on it, sixty days before election, ninety days before election. You can have a little sign up all year round. So I understand the purpose of this ordinance is to try to, uh, comply with Reed versus Gilbert's project. To give away from content-based determinations. But you open up other issues when you do that. And that's one of the concerns to me. So.
Mr. Kresch.
Oh, I think we should move into the next meeting so this way we have more time to go, uh, uh, over this material and, and write down some comments and come back.
I'm not sure if the next meeting would, would solve that. We need a little bit of more education in, in, in why we're doing this and how. What I'm worried about, about is the real estate people, the moms that wanna have their cheerleading team in the front. You're gonna have a whole bunch of pissed-off people looking at you. And the Irish-American guy that wants to fly the, the Irish flag and Texas flag and US flag and all this other stuff that's gonna happen.
Yeah, I think we just have to keep in mind what the Supreme Court said, which is if you have to read it, and that would include the state of Texas. If you have to read it to enforce an ordinance, it's illegal.
Well, most everything you have to read, right?
Then it's illegal. If you regulate it in terms of a sign ordinance. If you have to read it to regulate it, it's illegal.
Mr. Getz?
You know, I'm not sure how far this Supreme Court really wanted to go, but under this. We've all seen how it's become popular when somebody has a birthday to have congratulations, happy birthday. I mean, would each one of those individual things with a stick in the ground be a separate sign? I would argue it probably would. So, you know, that would put all of those businesses out of there. There, this.
It would be. You, you have any comments?
No.
Okay. All right, so, uh, hold on a minute. Does this require public opinion or public comment? No?
Well, once we, if the decision is to move forward, we would need to.
Yeah, it'll, it'll require public hearing.
Yeah.
All right. I didn't see that on my paper here, so.
But I think my recommendation would be to perhaps establish a subcommittee to look at it. We could works- work session it, but, work session it, but it would be in the, the similar forum.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and get some legal advice from the city attorney and, uh, continue on now. But I, I, I think this would affect a lot of people. Uh, maybe unintentionally, so.
Before we close out, I have an additional question because I think there's also.
Go ahead, please.
Another opinion about why we need sign regulations is that not everyone, especially within the community, is gonna be in agreement with having. Their neighborhood marred with lots of signage throughout the year, which it, it defeats the whole idea of unification of our city. I mean, you know, so, um, I'm just trying to hear it from a different viewpoint to understand about constitutional rights and so forth. But there has been concern that I've heard from neighbors and so forth, that especially when you live in a community where. Part of it is still undeveloped and you have just loads and loads of signs filling up the community. So I can see.
Not being tasteful, yeah.
Another opinion to why it is important to have, uh, or to go back and look at. Some, uh, the regulations and language. If you can't control the content, you have to understand too that. You can have a, a sign go up right next door to you with something you would see offensive. But since you're not allowed to control the content, but just the quantity and the size of the signs.
And we do get, you know, post-campaign season, whatever the campaign is, we do get calls saying, hey, what are y'all gonna do about these signs?
You're tired of discussion, aren't you? Anybody else? All right, we've heard from, uh. Mr. Boone and, uh, again, I, I, like I said, my house sits. Hundred and fifty feet from, from the street and if I have to move my house number to the front door, nobody would find my house. But anyway, uh. I guess I entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to table it, to further review.
Second.
Uh, further review by who, what, when? I, I don't wanna leave it just clapping out there.
About three weeks, it'll be about three weeks, about.
And what action do we need before that? Do, do we want him to have a subcommittee or having a training session? Or a discussion with the attorney, city attorney?
Discussion with the attorney.
Okay. You volunteer for that? Fantastic. Can you arrange that, sir?
Do you want to do it at the next meeting or? You wanna have a special meeting?
Why, why don't, why don't we have a special meeting, a training meeting or a discussion meeting?
Okay.
It would be open to the public, but you would do it for the, for the commission.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So we have a motion, uh, to postpone this until further, uh, training or clarification by the, uh. Uh, the head of the planning commission, uh, Mr. Boone and the city attorney. And upon that time, we'll bring this back to the commission. And we have a second. You agree with that?
I do, uh-huh.
Jargon in there? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, and in opposition. Mr. Boone, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Do you have a headache now?
It's a thankless job.
All right, what's next?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a crematorium in a G C M D. General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, uh, for the property at thirty-four seventy-five South Eleventh Street. Uh, Proctor's Mortuary is requesting permission to allow a crematorium at this location. Uh, the property will function solely as a crematorium. Uh, the remains will be sent to this facility and returned. There will be no customers coming and going from this property, only staff. Uh, no changes are planned for the building or other areas around the building, other than painting. Uh, the property to the east is zone residential and requires screening by the ordinance. But before I go into that, let me, let me go ahead and show you the property in question outlined here in red, uh, on Eleventh Street. You'll see the property in question is zone G C M D, general commercial along Eleventh. But the properties to the east are R S. Single-family and R M H., uh, multifamily, high-density. Uh, this is the property in question outlined in red. If you see here, there is an alleyway or an unopened right-of-way that's on the property that's been covered up for, uh, many years. Uh, it doesn't look like it's being actively used, uh, but we do address that in the, uh, conditions. Uh, this is the, uh, s- proposed site plan, superimposed on the map. And again, you can see the unopened alley there and the building in question. This is a view of the subject property. A view to the north. A view to the north and northeast. This is a view to the east. Also to the east. Uh, this is to the southeast. And to the south. Also to the south. And this is to the southwest. And to the west. And to the northwest. That's the bingo hall, I believe.
Can you go back to that first aerial photograph, please?
Yeah, if you can use the air, it'd be quicker. Or the.
This looks like a heck of a large building.
I think it should be William Escalation, I think. Escalation.
Yes, yes, sir. Williams, yes, sir.
And go back to the, to the plan, please, to the survey? Okay.
This one?
Yeah, yeah. It's only a hundred ten by eighty? Looks like a heck of a lot larger, doesn't it? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Boone?
Let me, um, real quick, let me finish this up.
Yeah, yeah, please. I'm sorry.
The property to the east is zone residential, requires screening by the ordinance. Uh, there is an existing chain-link fence along most of this boundary. However, the zoning ordinance would require an eight-foot wood or masonry fence along the property line. Uh, the alleyway across the middle of the property is, as mentioned, is still open. Um, and there should be no further encroachment on this alley in terms of a structure, unless it's abandoned sometime in the future. Just so you know, we did send out twenty-six, uh, property owner notifications. We received one in favor, uh, from a, Mr. Hassan, uh, of forty-one fifty Crow Road. I believe that's the property, or the property question is across the street. Uh, but he's just in favor of the application. And we did receive one call in opposition from across the street and we received one in, uh, letter of opposition. Uh, from Lydia Williams at thirty-five oh-nine Waverly, which I believe is this property, uh, right here to the east. And Ms. Williams is stating, uh, this letter is about the proposed construction of a crematorium. Uh, I have reviewed the proposed project and I totally disagree with the building of a crematorium near a residential area where children and older adults live. The United States Environmental Protection Agency states that toxins are released into the environment through the cremation of bodies. As EPA study in twenty-eleven, the most dangerous of these toxins being mercury. Uh, even very small amounts of mercury can be dangerous. Children and older adults with multiple diagnoses are susceptible to the dangers of having a crematorium near our residential neighborhood. Who would want a crematorium next to their home or neighborhood? Remember, there will be a sys- there will be a systematic burning of human remains, day in and day out for decades to come. Additionally, the president, presence of crematorium near our houses could have some financial impact. City tax revenues could be decreased as the property values of homes near the crematorium will go down. Schools may also see increase in the need for special education due to the rise of learning disabilities and autism among children who live near the crematorium. Uh, because of the various health and financial concerns associated with the building of a crematorium near my home and neighborhood, I ask for your reconsideration. So that was in opposition, of course. Um, based on the application, um, well, let me, let me talk a little bit. We did route this application to our health department. They had no objections. Um, in preparation to the staff report, uh, we did do a little bit of recen- well, we did some research on crematoriums. Um, there was an EPA study done back in twenty-eleven. Um, I can only speak to the, to the extent that I, that I read it or a summary of it. And that, um, they currently don't specifically regulate crematoriums. Uh, they did find there were some, um. There was some exhaust of heavy metals, uh, but not enough, uh, to warrant regulation or testing. And I will say, in, in, in comparing what other cities and states do, uh, regarding crematory. Um, crematories that, um, states, we found Connecticut and California and Florida and Georgia regulate the location of crematory. Uh, but the state of Texas, uh, does not, uh, only to the extent that, that you have to register. And that your crematory has to be in conjunction with a funeral facility. Uh, we did inquire about that to the applicant and they did say that they were aware of that regulation. And that they would be, uh, making sure that's adhered to. Uh, but based on that, we are recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, install an eight-foot wood and, or masonry fence along the east property line. A gate should be installed at the alley for any future access. Uh, number two, no new encroachment on the alleyway unless an abandonment has been granted. And then finally, number three, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements. Including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment and/or F O G. program. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, uh, you, something that caught my attention. You said that there's a regulation that the mortuary needs to be near the crematorium?
It, our reading of the state statute says that a crematorium has. Our reading of the state statute says that a crematorium has to be on the same property as a cemetery or a funeral service, entity that provides funeral services. But then when you look that up in the health code, it just defines as you're providing funeral services, so...
And the owner's saying that there will not have any other facilities other than this?
Well, once we found that statute, we did reach out to the applicant and asked them, are you aware of the statute and are you going to comply with it? And they said they were and they would.
Which means that they have to have a facility next to this one.
Correct. But I will say, the definition of facility in the state statute is a little vague.
Okay, we'll ask them. Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Proctor? Good afternoon, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is LaShawn Proctor. Address thirty-five twenty-two Washington Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And you have any additional information, Mr. Proctor?
Yes, sir. Just to answer a few questions that you had that you was asking, Mr. Boone. Thank you, Mr. Boone. I think you've done a wonderful job as far as the presentation. As far as what state regulations require as far as funeral homes, as you stated, does, when you look at it, it has to have, be attached to a funeral home, in a sense. But in a sense, with state board, and I've already kind of researched this, you have to have a, most of your crematoriums, funeral homes have an embalming service. So that's where the backflow prevention pump comes in, that is attached to all funeral homes. So all of our funeral homes have to have a backflow prevention pump, which is gonna be the same thing that's gonna be provided in this building when the water, all of the water treatment things and all of those things are put in, the system is put in. At that point as well, is with attached to that with the state board, is there's going to be, we don't, we centralize embalm for all of our locations. So all of our embalming is done on our Beaumont location. So in this facility as well, will be an embalming station in there. So that's where it's going to come in and meet the codes, you know, as far as the crematory. All of that stuff has to be tied into a crematorium. And this is what's regulated by state, Texas State Funeral Service Commission, is gonna regulate all of that as far as the codes and things that goes into that building.
What about the emission?
With the emissions, all of those things are done, and we've done, the service that we're gonna use is US cremations. They're out of Florida, is where the company that builds the crematorium out of. All of those things are, the emissions and all of that is regulated through that. It's like all of the other crematories. There are no emissions concerns, you know, that they have. Of course, when the crematoriums are burning, most of the time you don't even know that they're burning. You know, you don't even know, because of the filtration system and the filtration that it has that's with the crematory, it tries to basically filter everything before it comes out of the stack. So those are just some things that have been explained to us in doing our research and then going to the person that's gonna be installing all the equipment as far as how they run. We have been to some other crematoriums and just seen how they run and how the things are, and it's just not been a big concern for those persons that's been there. Because they are, some of your crematories, when you get into the city, and like Houston's and some of your bigger areas, they are in some of the older areas, you know, where they're putting in crematoriums and things like that. They are in close to residential areas and things like that.
I think we have a, one that's on one twenty-four.
Yes, sir.
Isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And then we also have a vet that is in the Mellow Town, is on Dallin Road.
Yes, sir.
Right. So just hypothetically, if I was your neighbor, what do you tell me?
In all the things with our neighbors, I think it would be safe. I think it would be safe for the community. As far as raising the taxes and those things like that, I would say that's something that we, in our sense, when we looked at this property in doing it, I don't, I think it's going to better the value of the property. It's just the building that's sitting there. You know, when Williams Insulation moved out, the building sat dormant for some time. So it's just something for us to better the community, try to build in the community and bring things, because we're gonna, we're gonna come in and beautify the location. You know, so it's a lot of things that we're gonna do with this property, just to make it look better. You know, so it can be, when we renovate and do those things, and even with Mr. Boone, it's one of the things with, I would, I'm gonna put in an amendment for that alleyway, because it's been there. It's been like that, I guess, since they had the building and they closed it in, and it's been fenced in, so it's already fenced in. And I'll just ensure my neighbors that it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be a health concern to them. It's gonna be something that's just gonna better the community and hopefully raise the property value, you know, up there. When you start building up communities, it's only gonna raise up the property value.
Will you do me a favor and maybe you visit with your neighbor?
Yes, sir.
Make sure you assure him that you're not gonna be harmful to the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm sure you can do that very easy. I don't have any other questions.
Are you going to employ new people?
Yes, sir. We are going to, we are going to be employing more personnel for that, because we're going to have a staff that just run the crematory. So we are in that process. We're going to be employing people to come in and do that and do that process.
How many is there?
Sir?
How many people are you employing?
Well, we have, right now, we're looking at probably maybe two or three. It's not anything that we're gonna run twenty-four hours. You know, it's only gonna be something right now that we're looking at running, doing business hours, eight to five, you know, and a thing like that. So it's in that crematory, it's just a sense of what, our business workload right now, as far as it is, supports us putting a crematory in, even if we don't cremate for anyone else. If you guys are not familiar, and I'll just, in a sense, as far as crematoriums here, we only have actually two crematoriums in this whole area that service all of the funeral homes in Jefferson County. That's Port Arthur and all of those things. And Broussard's and Clay Bar are the only two funeral homes that you have crematoriums. And really, Broussard's only cremates for themselves. And Clay Bar cremates for every other funeral home around here, you know? So it's a thing for us to where our workload is, to where if it makes sense for us to put our own in, and if we're able to just do our own, it's sort of like Broussard's. That's the workload that it's gonna have. So we're gonna employ other persons in order to be able to do that. And that's what we're looking at.
Have you already purchased the building, or is it a lease, or what?
No, ma'am. We're purchasing the building. Actually, we're, right now, we're just waiting, all of the stuff is at the title company, and we're just waiting to go to closing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Do you know the one person that has made the complaint or concern?
No, sir. This is the first that I've heard of it, but I will reach out, because there's only one house that's really behind that property. It's only one house behind it, because the property that's, the house is directly behind the parking lot. And on the other side, there are no homes that's right behind it. So it's, that's gonna be the only person that I would assume that it was.
So what type of fence are you planning to install? Wood or masonry? Do you decide it?
Yes, sir. We're gonna do wood. Initially, what happened is the fence that's there was just replaced, because the property owner, there had some issues with the fence, and there had some trees had grown up in it. So we were going to, in the deal that we constructed, we were just gonna replace the fence, period, not have him to do anything, because we knew what we wanted to do with the fence, to close it in. But he, in turn, had someone to come in, and they replaced, actually, the fence along, I'd say Waverly, and to the back. So they, all of that fence is brand-new. But we wanted to put a wood fence, a privacy fence, to where you could not see in. And because of the way that it is, not so much on the front side, but even probably on the front side, we wanna fence in the whole thing with a wood fence, and that's what we were gonna do anyway.
You say you're gonna bring the property values up in the area?
Yes, sir.
I'm four doors down. You gonna help me to pay taxes when it comes?
Well, I mean, it's one of those things, Mr. ... Yes, yes, sir. But even with me, and I think with our building, when we done our building, yes, sir, we are neighbors. Our property value went up, and we have three acres of land on the backside that we can't even develop, that our property value went up on it, and we can't even do anything with it. But I mean, as far as just beautifying the area, that's my goal, you know, in a sense of just beautifying the area and making Beaumont to be, to just make it look better, in the areas that have been somewhat neglected.
Let me, on a serious note, I just wanna ask a question. Does that create any kind of smell?
No, sir. Crematory, there's no smell that comes in. I mean, the only smell that you would have, in a sense, with crematories are bodies that already are decomposing, in a sense. Outside of that, you don't have any smell with crematoriums.
You have fielders on, fielders?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Proctor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your time as well.
Sure. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the gentleman, that's the applicant, and also the city staff, and we heard the objections from the neighbor via the letter, and I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve with the three conditions, right?
Three conditions. Yeah, the three conditions we have.
Okay. And your second is with the three conditions. Great. We have a motion to approve, and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Yeah. Excuse me, the ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Mr. Boone?
The final item, the applicant requested it be held over.
All right, that was the PZ twenty twenty dash forty-five. Perfect. Okay, with that, Mr. Fellshaw, we would anxiously await you sending us home.
That concludes our meeting. Again, thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a great afternoon.
What's up? Good. Very good. Good. You're cool, man. I like that. Really like that. Guy is best. I love him. I love him. Oh, you can't get him online?
Yeah.
You went to got it from the source. Oh, that's wonderful. It looks good. It is comfortable. I used to wear it a long time ago.
Like a veteran.
Yeah. Guy is, yeah. Absolutely. Hey, now. Good to see you. Well, we made another one, huh?
How you doing? Good. How's it going? Great, great. That's what I thought, too. How you doing?
Fresh, are you? Peter, bro? Good to see you, man. Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Okay? I'll get up real quick.
Hello.
All right. You're, uh, started. One of our best.
You want to stand?
Yeah.